We want to respect everyone's time and try to, we have a lot planned this evening and try to be finished by eight o'clock. So we're going to jump in. I am Karen Forget and I'm the Executive Director of Lynn Haven River Now and it is my pleasure to welcome all of you to our 12th Annual Candidates Forum and our very first virtual Candidates Forum. So thank you for joining us this evening. Joining us tonight are our three candidates for Mayor Bobby Dyer.
Good evening, everyone.
R.K. Kowalowicz.
Hello, everybody.
And Jody Wagner.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
And also on our panel tonight are our three candidates for the at-large seat on the City Council, Brandon Hutchins.
Evening.
Nadine Panisha.
Thank you, Karen.
And Rosemary Wilson.
Good to be together.
And welcome to all of you and thank you for taking your time. I know your schedules are extremely busy and we appreciate your joining us this evening. Also on the panel are Emily Hatfield, who is our LR Now IT Coordinator, and she'll be working behind the scenes to make sure everything runs smoothly, Jim Deppi, who is our LR Now Advocacy Coordinator, and Helen Coons, our LR Now Assistant Director. Helen will be serving as our timekeeper. She will raise a sign to let the candidates know how much time remains in your responses. Jim Deppi and I will ask five questions. The questions will appear in one of the panel grid boxes and should be visible to both the candidates and the participants. Each candidate will be given two minutes to respond, so please watch the timer. And we will change up the order of respondents for each question. And so we will call the names. We'll go in a little bit different order on each question. After the fifth question, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. The candidates can remain unmuted unless we have some audio interference. If that happens, we will ask you to mute and unmute yourselves as appropriate. All other participants will remain muted and we are not going to be using the chat function tonight. Lastly, we will be recording the forum and we'll send each participant a link and we'll be publicizing that link for those who are unable to join us tonight. With that, let's get started. Our first question will be asked by Jim Deppi.
Good evening and thanks for joining us. The order of answers for this question will be in this order: Bobby Dyer, R.K. Kowalowicz, Jody Wagner, Brandon Hutchins, Nadine Panisha, and Rosemary Wilson. The question number one involves tree canopies. Sea level wise, is the city's comprehensive program for addressing sea levels, rising sea levels and recurrent flooding risks? The Adaptation Strategy, published in March 2020, outlines a proactive, long-term approach to enable the city of Virginia Beach to adapt to these changing environmental conditions. Among the nature-based flood mitigation strategies addressed in the program is forest restoration, enhancement, or creation. According to the latest Urban Tree Canopy Report, Virginia Beach continues to fall short of the 40% urban tree canopy coverage recommended for mid-Atlantic cities of comparable size. And so these are the questions and you can see them in front of you. What are the challenges associated with tree canopy loss in Virginia Beach? What specific initiatives will you support to help us meet Virginia Beach's forest restoration, enhancement, and creation goals? And is this an important strategy in combating flooding? First, Mayor Dyer.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and you know, thank you for the concern. And obviously, this is a very high priority within our city. The tree canopy loss is something that we really have to take care of, especially--
Mr. Dyer, we're having difficulty hearing you.
And hearing.
You're still a little soft. Can you turn up your volume?
Okay, hang on one second. Hang on, we'll be right with you here. Do you hear me now?
It's a little better. Still soft.
Okay, I'll speak in Jersey talk and raise my voice a little bit. It's nothing personal. Obviously, within the city, your tree canopy loss is a very, very significant problem, and especially in the southern part of the city with not only the flooding but also the sea level rise. A number of months ago, Barbara Henley came to me and asked me if we would support her initiative to mitigate and actually get more trees planted, but obviously around the city also. And I think as we do develop, we also have to ensure in our planning efforts that there are considerations taken for to make sure that vegetation and trees, which are essential for absorbing groundwater, but also the aesthetics of it is important, too. So once again, this will remain a high priority. And as a matter of fact, I designated Council Lady Henley and Aaron Rouse to form a task force on infill development. And Mrs. Henley's passion for the tree planting will certainly be something that I do support 100%, but once again, it's a strategy, but it's also part of a broad mosaic of strategies that we have to have in a city to deal with this problem. It remains the number one problem in the city in terms of flooding and things of this nature. And we dedicated a large, large part, the historic percentage of our budget this time is going towards some of these solutions. But once again, we sit down and we will be able to figure out, but this is a very high important strategy to deal with the flooding issues. And we will also be open to listening to the many other strategies that are open and out there as we move forward.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. R.K. Kowalowicz, you're next.
Well, it's very important that we do replace the tree canopy problems we have. I mean, trees absorb a lot of water. And I mean, obviously, the city of Virginia Beach has two shed areas. It's for the north and the south. And it's important that we're cognizant about where we're developing and how many trees we're removing. But I agree that this is an important issue, but there's a bigger important issue when it comes to flooding in our cities, the maintenance. The maintenance is a real problem. That needs to be fixed now so we can really get a grasp of what's going on. I don't care what part of the city we develop in, those trees should be replaced and we should be really cognizant about ripping down all our trees and putting impervious surfaces in. And we need to look at probably pervious surfaces as well, other than impervious surfaces when we do our developing. I think this is an important issue. And all this together, and maybe how about putting a sabbatical on building in low-lying areas that we know there's a flooding problem? And if it's essential that we build in these areas, maybe we build in a higher foundation level or on pilings. These are all important things. But I think the lack of maintenance over the last 20 years, where the funding hasn't been done properly and spent on other issues, they haven't prioritized the maintenance. And it's a huge problem in a city of 497 square miles. And I don't believe it's been taken seriously. I mean, we have five council members over the last, that have 120 years' experience on council. This thing shouldn't be happening. These people should know what's going on. They've been around the developing. This needs to change. And the trees are an important issue. They consume a lot of water. And we need to be cognizant about how we develop, where we develop, and how many trees we're taking down. Thank you.
Thank you. Jody Wagner?
Thank you very much. Flooding and flooding, sea level rise, and coastal restoration are absolutely critical, and we need to be focusing on it. In fact, when I entered this race, we started a task force to deal with that issue. And last night, we had an event where the task force members reported out their solutions, and they were buried and they were broad. Some of them are inexpensive and some of them are very costly. But the thing that's not that expensive is to plant trees. And I would think that we should actually go on a campaign where we encourage residents and business owners to plant trees and have a goal of planting one tree for each person that's died in the COVID epidemic. And if we did that, as of today, we'd have 210,000 trees planted. And unfortunately, I think it will be a lot more by the end of the pandemic. So I think that we need to have a campaign to encourage that. But we also need to have a campaign to encourage mitigation strategies by residents and businesses to mitigate sea level, to mitigate all the flooding challenges on their property. And there are a lot of opportunities that we can offer in terms of tax benefits to, the state government authorized the city council to begin offering tax incentives for mitigation on property. And I think we need to do that. We need to be empowering the citizens of Virginia Beach and the businesses of Virginia Beach to help us and to come to us. So, you know, reforesting the area is one. And it could be something that we could do in a really fun way. You could plant a tree in memory of somebody. You could plant a tree in honor of somebody's birthday. There are a lot of ways that we can do it. You know, when I was growing up, Israel was just getting going, and I got more trees planted in my name than I can count for every event that ever happened. There's no reason Virginia Beach can't embark on a campaign like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Hutchins, you're on.
Right. I gotta start by telling you the, you know, real-life story. This year, my wife wanted to do some things in the backyard, and we had this massive oak tree that I hated, 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 cut down. What we did, it was plant trees in its place. You know, tree canopies, they reduce temperatures and preserve our wildlife habitat and enhance our property value. You know, we've got to, and it just absorbs a lot of water and helps mitigate flooding issues we're having. You know, this is no brainer. We reserve our trees and our green spaces for many reasons. The most glaring is our severe flooding events that we're having more and more often. So I think we need to have a tough conversation to figure out how to, I'll be best--
Thank you, Brandon. Nadine Panisha, it's over to you, please.
Sorry about that. This tree reforestation is warming my heart, what's going on at Asheville Park, because that development has been a thorn in our side for a long time. So it's really wonderful to see Ms. Henley take the lead and actually get some action done with our tree situation. But people don't realize that one mature tree absorbs 11,000 gallons of water. That's a lot of water. And we have failed, I think, to work with our developers and demand more sustainable approaches to development. Because the more mature the tree, the more water is absorbed. And then, once it's absorbed, it sends oxygen into the air, which cleans the air. So, you know, it's vital that we respect our natural resources in our efforts to grow our city. And I would definitely support any initiatives that called for developers to leave mature trees on the property. I would call for any efforts to create parks and green space in every single neighborhood in the city, every neighborhood. Because COVID has taught us that nature is the healer. They told us to go outside. They told us to get fresh air. And not every neighborhood in our city is set up to deliver the best possible natural resources to the community. So I think we have work to do in the city. I'm a total advocate of planting trees, but that is just one tool in the toolbox of flooding. It's just one. There are so many that we would probably go till midnight tonight to discuss all the options. But I'm really grateful that we have a tree, that the city council and the city is recognizing that this is a vital area for future development and even to remake what we've already lost.
Thank you, Nadine. And finally, Rosemary Wilson, please.
Yes. This has been, become a really hot topic for the council, and we recognize that this is a great way to help with the very expensive programs of flooding. You know, we had our Dewberry Study, and we're going even further with our Dewberry Study to go more into the southern part of the city. And with the Dewberry Study, we found that we have a lot of things we can do that are very, very expensive. But this is one thing that we can do that is fairly inexpensive compared to the other projects. So it's going to do a lot for helping with the flooding. It's going to do a lot for making our city a more desirable place to be. Down in the county, there is a lot of farmland, so in those open spaces, it's really not a tree area. So we have to look for the places to put the additional trees to help with the flooding, and especially along the areas that are going to be flooding. I'm in the process of, I'm talking about parks. I'm in the process of getting a private owner to turn over three parcels of land in a very dense neighborhood where there's a lot of children and they have no place to play. And so, and these are triangular, like pocket parks. And we're going to get those to be turned over to the city, and those children are going to have a place to play. And that'll be in the near future. It's a very dense neighborhood with a lot of townhouses, and these children don't have a place to play. But this is something very important to us as a city, and we are definitely working towards this goal.
Thank you, Rosemary. Karen, over to you for question two.
All right. Thank you. Our second question relates to transportation in Virginia Beach. Residents aged 65 and older make up the fastest-growing population group in Virginia Beach. As people age, at some point, most limit or eliminate their own vehicles. Studies also show that inadequate public transportation options disproportionately affect minority and low-income communities. And lastly, traffic and impervious surface required to accommodate ever-growing numbers of cars can adversely affect water quality. So our questions are: Do you agree that we need to expand public transportation? What do you see as the top challenges associated with public transportation in Virginia Beach? And what solutions do you propose to address them? And what would be your first step? And we will begin our answers with Jody Wagner.
Thank you, Karen. Well, first of all, yes, public transportation is a great need, but I think it's not only a need for senior citizens. We are trying to attract millennials to the area, and millennials really demand public transportation. They don't want to own cars. Or if they own a car, they want to keep it for the weekends. They want to be able to take transportation to work. So I think it's, we need to look at transportation really for three major groups: senior citizens, the millennials, and people who cannot afford to maintain a car and need to get to work. So that, you know, it's really a very broad-based need. Virginia Beach is a big city, so it's challenging to be able to provide transportation throughout the city. But it's something that we need to do. I think, you know, funding is the major issue. It's always been the major issue. When I was in state government, I served as treasurer for four years and then Secretary of Finance for three. And a lot of our time was spent trying to solve the transportation challenges of the state and particularly this region and northern Virginia. So, you know, we need to look at funding mechanisms. We need to focus on strategies to have clean buses and perhaps fast electric buses. We need dedicated routes so that people know that, you know, the beauty of light rail would have been, that there would have been a very clean path, that everybody would have known where the tide was going. We aren't going to have that, but we can replicate it in other ways, using clean buses, electric buses, to go along paths. So we have a lot of work to do in that area. With regard to what my first step would be, I think it's important that we all experience what it's like for people that can't drive a car and need to use public transportation. So as a new mayor, I would, and I would ask all of my city council members to join me in doing the following. One day, we're going to take a bus from our house to our place of work, from our place of work to City Hall, and from City Hall home. And we're going to see how long it takes us to do that and how many bus changes we have to make. And then we will understand the challenges that people have in using public transportation. And so that is the first thing that I would do. And I think if we can get our city council understanding those challenges, then we need to branch out and get others that are working with us in community groups, in the chamber, to understand those challenges. But we need to work collectively with the state and federal government on transportation. And I think it's absolutely essential. You know, one challenge that I think we've had is we have not, as a city, done a great job of lobbying the federal government for help and lobbying the state government for help. And I think that, you know, frankly, the federal government has the most money. We need to be going to DC on a regular basis and making our case for projects that we need to have funded. And those are projects both that address sea level rise and address transportation in a variety of other areas. We need to be going to state government and using our connections to get help there. And we need to be very visible. I can tell you that when I--
Thank you. I think we've passed our two--
Sorry, I'm not seeing the numbers.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
There it is. Okay.
Thank you for your response. And we'll move on to R.K. Kowalowicz.
Well, let's talk about the challenges first. It's the big challenge. We're the largest resort city in the world, 497 square miles. To give you a comparison, Norfolk is 95 square miles. Recently, when light rail came forward, I partnered with John Atkinson with No Light Rail. We formed a team and took action. We didn't take action because we didn't like light rail. We took action because light rail would not work for Virginia Beach. It was way too expensive, and it just wouldn't work. But people need to realize something. Over the years, our bus systems have been declining in ridership. And I've talked about this for over 15 years. We needed to have covered areas, which I see some of that happening already, covered lighted areas that people can wait for the transit. And we need more efficient, more efficient buses, smaller buses, and we need frequency. We need more frequency so people can get where they're going quicker. It is a huge challenge in a city of this size to do public transportation. And it's a huge mistake. You have to understand one thing. In the last 20 years, the city has seen zero growth. In the last four years, there's less people living here than the year before. The only things that increased in the city in the last years are our taxes. And people can't afford to live here anymore. We need to be very careful what we do. Whatever we do, we should make sure that the public can afford it. Now, Ms. Wagner, I understand her want to lobby Washington, but I'm going to tell you this: Federal taxes are federal taxes. All of us pay them. Taxes are taxes. Nobody wants to pay any more taxes. We're paying enough taxes now. We need to find a way to reduce our taxes, starting with the water bills. We're paying $100 a month. We need to find a way to reduce that and start spending the monies where they need to be done. Only 35% of our money for the water bills, excuse me, for stormwater, is being spent on stormwater maintenance. How about auditing that and getting that done right now? Those are things that can help the citizens of Virginia Beach. Transportation, obviously, we need to work with the experts. We know it's not going to be cheap, and we know it's going to be expensive. We get that. So we need to do the best for Virginia Beach, the whole city, not just the few. And we can't raise taxes anymore. That is not acceptable.
Thank you. Mr. Dyer?
Oh, thank you very much. Without question, we do have to improve public transportation. And over the last couple of years, I've been working with the other mayors in the region toward that end. The problem is that, the problem is not just a Virginia Beach problem. It's a regional problem. You still have to develop those networks to get people from Suffolk to Virginia Beach and other areas. But just the other week, I was with the governor down at HRT, where we got together and we, in conjunction with Dominion Power, launched a fleet of electric buses that are going to be running from Norfolk to our oceanfront. Now, this is just a start. But one of the challenges that we do have, Virginia Beach is a congested cul-de-sac. And the other thing is, we are not like big cities that have a grid system that leaves itself favorably toward public transportation. So there's going to be short-term fixes and long-term fixes. And one of the short-term is, yes, to try to get, but the other thing is, you don't need just the thing. Light rail was a system that people would have to drive to to use it. You need a system that goes all the way to oceanfront, but you've got to go north-south also. And that is up and down Lynn Haven and up and down, you know, the other areas right there, Princess Anne Road to the other areas of the city. And to do this, we have to build that system in. And the other thing is autonomous vehicles that are going to be needed, because that's how you're going to get, as we age as a city, you're going to have to have elderly that can't get out of their neighborhoods and their cul-de-sacs. And autonomous vehicles in the future, and it may not be that far away, may be an answer to help people and millennials and everybody get in.
Thank you. Rosemary Wilson?
Well, a lot has been said. It's totally true. We have had a funding problem with providing public transportation. And we've been very much a city that has been married to our cars. And it's because we're so spread out. We're actually 310 square miles as our city, and we have a lot of water in our city that separates. So it's hard to get from point A to point B because, you know, you've got waterways that block that, so you have to go all the way around. But we truly have to work as a region. We cannot do this by ourselves because things have to connect. It's just like water doesn't know city boundaries. The streets need to all go from one place. The people who want to get from one place to another, they don't really care if it's just a Virginia Beach. They care that they can get from one city to the other. But I will say that this year, we have gotten some more money from the state because they have rearranged some of the real estate tax dollars. And now we are able to expand our routes. And the important thing is the frequency. Frequency is really important because no one wants to have to wait an hour between catching one bus for another. They need to be much more frequent, so it makes it more convenient so that people can get to work. But it's really, really difficult with all of the different bodies of water and the way the city is laid out. Like Bobby says, we're not a grid system. One thing, even though we didn't get light rail, we do have the Norfolk Southern Right Way. And that is like a spine down the middle of the city that we're going to be able to access at one point, whether it's BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, or if it's going to be something for the autonomous vehicles to be able to travel along. That spine, it was expensive, but it belongs to us now. And you couldn't just pick that up anywhere without condemning property. That's why it's really important that we do have this. And that's going to be a real good future point for us developing our public transportation.
Thank you. Nadine Panisha?
Thank you. So I have a different vision for this because we don't have a traditional grid system. One of the things that I always look at is what happened with the Vibe District and how pedestrian it is, how small business is coinciding with residential, commercial and residential together. And it's its own little 15-minute bike ride city within the city, right? And millennials don't want cars. That's been said before. When we created our city, we created a city with little individual neighborhoods throughout the city. So maybe one way to look at this is to say, each one of these little neighborhoods becomes a 15-minute city, where you have connectivity, you have bike paths, you have the ability for the mass transit that we modify to make headway there. But we will never be Boston and New York City, nor should we want to be. We have a flooding problem. So the very first thing that would ever get flooded would be a light rail system. So the very first thing that would ever get flooded would be a light rail system. I think that we have an opportunity to recreate mass transit by recreating our neighborhoods and recreating the connectivity between our neighborhoods. It's a little bit different of an approach, but I look at Vibe and I see that that can be duplicated throughout the city. It's just one idea. And what my first step would be, I had a really discouraging conversation with someone who relies on the buses. And I went to pick them up. And basically, the bus stop was overgrown, dirty, littered. We don't care about it. So the very first thing I would do is clean it up and make it attractive for people to ride the bus.
Thank you. Brandon Hutchins.
Yes, I absolutely agree that we need to expand our public transportation. Two of the biggest challenges, I think, in my mind, are the lack of regionalism, one. And then, two, the lack of timely routes. You know, the Bus Rapid Transit we're seeing in Richmond has been a huge success. Ridership increase was a more affordable option, having something similar to the light rail that was proposed here. And to ensure that's effective, I think we need to implement similar features, which we do. Raise platforms.
Brandon, it's very hard to hear you.
Can you hear me okay now, Rick?
Yeah, a little bit better. It was a little muffled, just like you were going in and out.
Got you. Ridership, ridership with the Bus Rapid Transit has increased. It was a more affordable option and something similar to the light rail that was proposed here. I'm to assure that's effective, I think we need to implement similar features like Richmond did. Raise platforms, designated bus lanes, ticket kiosks and platforms. We really need to improve our transit quickly in order to keep our cities up to us, especially if we want to retain the talent that we have and attract more. This is one of those, this is one of those issues that we can't tackle alone on council that know how to build and hold relationships with other city leaders across Hampton Roads. It's why regionalism is so vital for our area. We have to work in conjunction with our regional partners. We're going to continue to see these issues over and over again. Over the course of this particular campaign, I've listened a handful of times to the Hampton Roads Planning District meetings. They're doing some amazing work. I'd like to see Virginia Beach get a little bit more involved and take the leadership role in that. Thanks.
Thank you, Brandon. And the third question, we'll go to Jim.
The third question has to do with the pandemic and the associated revenue shortfalls. The COVID-19 pandemic has impacted everyone. Many people have been laid off. Some small business owners have suffered big losses. Families have had to accommodate distance learning while also working from home. And we are all learning with a heightened level of anxiety and worry. In addition, all levels of government are adjusting to reduced revenues. Part one, what should the city council do to address the challenges, these challenges in our community? And part two, where will you make budget cuts to adjust to reduced revenues? Will you recommend, will you recommend that's be horse? First answer will be from RK Kowalowicz.
Well, the pandemic, we don't know what's going to happen yet. We haven't seen the, what really going to happen, the revenue shortages that are, that's going to happen. Guesstimations are 20%, 30%. I think for us right now as a city, we need to take a sabbatical on all unnecessary spending. And we need to require all our department heads to bring back a budget of 5% to 15% below what they should have done. I'll give you an example of what happened here that's really concerning to me. In May, they approved another $240 million to add to our debt. None of that was for the businesses. It was for a business, a special interest business. And it should have been set aside for, A, number one, storm water, and to take all our small businesses throughout the city to help them all. It's not fair right now. We didn't cause this. And the small business community should, and that should be reversed. Look, we don't know what's going to happen. Nobody has a crystal ball. I mean, this is a tough issue for everybody. This is a time where we should be working all together, every one of us. And that's imperative that we do that. Virginia Beach needs to focus on Virginia Beach right now. Our council and our mayor should not be worrying about the other cities. We need to make sure that Virginia Beach comes back because that's who we work for, is the citizens of Virginia Beach. I personally, you know, believe that we've got a lot of work to do inside the city, and we have a long way to go, but we have the potentials tremendous to come back from this in a big way. The city's bigger than just the oceanfront. You know, running a choo-choo train to the oceanfront is not the answer when only 3.4% of the revenues come in are related to tourism. 96% of it comes in from everybody else. We need to focus on the bigger part, which is the city, which is on the whole budget. And that's what needs to happen. And we need to definitely tweak it down.
Thank you, RK. Your time is up. And next will be Jody Wagner.
Thank you. This is a challenging time, and we don't really know how challenging it's going to be because we don't know how deep the revenue shortfalls are going to be. Predictions are that a third of our restaurants will be out of business by the end of the year. Frightening thought, and it's possibly the reality. The tourist industry has been hit hard, personal service industries have been hit hard, and our families have been hit hard. So we, as a city, need to figure out how we help them and how we help them come out of this pandemic in the most effective way possible. And we need to make sure that we balance the city's budget. Unlike the federal government, we can't print money. Fortunately, I have experienced doing this before. When Mark Warner and I took office in 2002, we thought we were coming into a $400 million shortfall. Instead, it turned out to be an $8 billion shortfall. So what we did, and what I would do with the city, is I would ask each department to show me what a cut looks like at various levels. So depending on the level of revenue shortfall that we think we have, if it's significant, we ask for a 5%, 10% and 15% budget. And let's see what the costs are in each department for making those cuts. There are going to be some departments that can't afford to have a cut. You know, take the police department, for example. They're already underfunded. So we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to cut there. But there may be other parts of the city that have a lot of unnecessary expenses or things that we think we can do without during this time, during this time. So we need to go through the process on a department-to-mart apartment basis and make a rational decision of what we need to do. And then finally, in order to make sure that our businesses are able to get started again, those that have had to close and those that are ready to expand, we need to fix our permitting process so that they can come out of it and soar after things, after COVID is resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mayor Dyer.
Oh, thank you very much. You know, back in March and April, we were confronted, confronted with a major, major challenge. And we had a budget set, ready to go, but we had to go back and modify it. We're proud to say that our council came together and passed a budget that was unified by all members of council. And working with the governor back then, we were the first ones to get open. One of the things we had to do is save the economy, save the summer. And yes, you know, the oceanfront is a very, very vital part as throughout the city. And we had to open, and we had to open safely and get the economy going. We had to protect people from the disease process itself, but also we saw spikes in depression, suicide, increased alcohol abuse, drug abuse, and domestic violence. So getting the economy open was essential. And based on some of the statistics that we got, we were able to help rescue a lot of the season at the oceanfront. But once again, the idea is to get open and open safely to get the tax going, you know, to get revenues going, but also to economic development, to create new businesses in terms of budget cuts, right, priorities. And that's what it's going to come down to. In spite of everything, we are still the most livable city. We are the safest city. We have to make sure our police, all public safety, our schools, and that people have access to the many amenities that we have here. But getting together, we have a new city manager that is bright and very well seasoned, and a council that's willing to get together and work on a budget that works for everybody. Will some sacrifices be necessary? Yes. But moving forward, I am confident that we are not only going to survive through this, we are going to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. And next, Rosemary Wilson.
First of all, I want everybody to know that we are in a financially sound city. We have a triple-A bond rating and the safest city of our size in the nation, and all of our schools are accredited. When this pandemic hit, it was just the time we were working on our budget, and we had to stop in our tracks and make a lot of changes to make it work. And what we did, we cut up anything that was new coming up. We decided we were going to do a hiring freeze. And by doing those several things, it really made a big difference. But we also did more than that. We stepped up to the plan dollars. We restored that money to schools. We also took $8.5 million of local dollars and created grants for small businesses, residents, and also for nonprofits to, it's not going to fix it for everybody. You can't do it for everyone. But we created $8.5 million to help those in the most need to keep their lights on, to be able to pay, pay their rent, and to be able to stay in business. And the other thing that we did is we gave a two-month meal tax holiday to help the restaurants, to encourage people to go out to eat and continue to support the restaurants. So we did a two-month meal tax revenue. Then we had taken millions and millions of the CARES Act funding, and we're still doing it. We're creating grants to help keep these businesses alive and afloat. The city has really stepped up. Every employee kept their job, done what we have done. And we're going to continue.
Someone who's been working their entire careers on public health and on the crisis. So yeah, I'm going to give them my ear over anyone else. Our legislative officials should be assisting our public health leaders in promoting safe health. And that's at all possible times, especially when you're within 60 with someone that's important. In terms of revenue declines and that recovery, we have, I think the city has done a good program, can and should be done, themselves, to make some tough economic decisions. We have come amongst, and I just hope that the residents of the city will put their confidence and trust in me to be a part of those conversations we just threw to the side of this pandemic. So I think for right now, we probably need to hold or defer any new projects and studies. I'd have to take a look at a completely new reforecast of the budget to hopefully answer on how I would cut, if I would cut. We set up a keeper game as budget in the shortfall. Thanks.
Thank you, Brandon. And finally, Nadine Panish.
Thank you. I just always like to stress and start by saying that we live in one of the most fragile coastal communities in the country. And right now, after this pandemic is over, we will have the opportunity to literally leverage the moment to create a more sustainable future. But in order to do that, we all have to understand exactly where we live and why it's important to create a sustainable future. Mother Nature's never going away. She's going to be there, okay? So unless we start taking the steps necessary to protect ourselves for 50 to 100 years into the future, we're doing a disservice to our children. One of the areas that, you know, I would look at budget-wise because of the sustainable situation is I would absolutely reevaluate our engineering department and our public works department. They are probably, right now, going into the future, our two most important areas if indeed we do want to tackle flooding and we do want to become more sustainable. And in terms of budgets, and in terms of cuts and all of that, you know, I work in the private sector and I work with multimillion-dollar budgets. And when we, right now, as a matter of fact, right now, we're going through our budget with a fine-toothed comb, and every extraneous thing is being taken out. And something else to consider here is we have one of the largest governments for a city our size. And I'm not suggesting that we don't want that to be maintained. I'm just suggesting that we may need to refocus the areas that are impacted. Again, I really am a believer that our engineering and our public works departments need to be a priority. So I guess cuts across the board, but really, it's hard for me to say because I'm not looking at that budget. I just know that I would rework it. And then I would focus on sustainability.
Thank you, Nadine. And for our next question area, I'll turn it back over to Karen Forj.
Thank you, Jim. On our fourth question, we're going to circle back around to flooding. It's come up in many responses this evening, and I think that reflects the fact that it is our number one challenge in Virginia Beach. So according to Virginia Beach's sea level-wise plan, or adaptation strategy for addressing rising sea levels and recurrent flooding risks, our four major watersheds, the oceanfront, the Lynn Haven River, the Elizabeth River, and our southern rivers, each present unique challenges. Each watershed strategy lays out the specific flood drivers and risk types distinctive to that watershed, and identifies specific projects and areas for action. The four major components of the adaptation framework designed to address coastal flooding include natural mitigations, engineering defenses, adapted structures, and prepared communities. So with that, that study as our framework, our questions are, how would you prioritize coastal flooding risks faced by the entire city of Virginia Beach? And secondly, the costs associated with each of these adaptation framework components are significant. How would you prioritize fund and implement these flood control opportunities? And last, what is your position on the issue of managed retreat and the need to restrict development in flood-prone and future flood-prone areas? And we will begin with Mayor Dyer.
Oh, thank you very much. This is not a short-term fix by any means. This is going to be a situation that we must deal with in perpetuity as we go forward. As a result of the DuBerry study and what we found out, it's going to be very, very, very expensive. Yes, the ocean is different, but also, we also have to keep water clean. And I think that is a function of Lynn Haven River now. So once again, this is a situation that involves basically the entire city. And we have to prioritize, we have to fund. And to do that, once again, this is going to come down with creating new sources of revenue. And but once again, we're going to have to improve our engineering on this. Many of these projects are going to require significantly high-level and high-profile engineering, you know, to mitigate a lot of the problems that we're dealing with in terms of the flood control. And let's not also remember that, you know, that when, you know, caused, you know, water rise and everything in the southern part of the city must also be a situation. You have to go out and make the money and to bring in those new businesses because in terms of other priorities too, you know, we have a $3 billion need in school modernization and improvement and replacement. We have to pay our first responders, our teachers. Our city is aging in infrastructure. But be assured that this is the number one priority of the city council. And flood-prone areas, once again, as we look at infield development and other strategies as we go through, you know, a new strategic- and other strategies, as we go through, you know, a new strategic plan, you know, let's make sure that flood-prone areas are taken care of.
Thank you. R.K. Kowalowicz.
Well, what's amazing to me, in the last fifteen years, we've collected a half a billion dollars in stormwater money, and about thirty percent of that or so has gone to stormwater management. We're one storm away from a disaster. We don't have time to wait. We have the money. We have four hundred million dollars sitting on the sideline. We need to take care of that now because until you can figure out what the maintenance part is causing the problems of the flooding, you're not in the right direction. The number-one issue right now is to get the maintenance caught up today, not in fifteen years. Do we need to have discussions about development along the way? Absolutely. Do we need to plant trees along the way? Do we need to be cognizant about where we develop, how we develop, especially in low-lying areas? Absolutely. But it's time to start, stop talking and studying and start doing. And that's exactly what I plan on doing. Obviously, we need to continue to do research and listen to the engineers and listen to the experts. But I can tell you this, having talked to the people who've done it in the city for a long time, they agree with me. The maintenance needs to be done now so we can see what's going on. This is a big problem. Where is all the money going? Where's all the money? We have the money. Where's it being spent? This is a problem. You're collecting over forty million dollars a year in stormwater management, and you're not spending the money where it should be spent. This is a big-time problem. And I've been talking about this for fifteen years. Some of these incumbents just feel like it just happened yesterday. What have they been doing, sleeping at the wheel? This is a serious, dangerous problem. We need to be fixed now, and we need to stop talking about it. And I'm sick and tired of hearing people, "Yeah, we need to study." Well, you've been in there for sixteen years, and you're still studying? You've been in there for twenty years, and you're still studying? You want to compare our cities to a city that's got sixty-two square miles or a city that's got ninety-five square miles? We're four hundred and ninety-seven square miles total of water and land. That's serious. That's a lot of money, a lot of infrastructure. And the taxpayers can't continue to be taxed out of their homes. We have the money. We don't need to raise taxes to do it. We need to stop talking and start doing. And that's what I'll bring to the plate.
Thank you. Jody Wagner.
Thank you. First, I want to apologize for the background noise. Rosemary texted me and asked what it is. I have an event that I'm supposed to be at this evening at Town Center where I'm supposed to speak as soon as this is over. And unfortunately, that's the music of the restaurant. They put me in a private room, but evidently, the sound barriers aren't so great. So I apologize.
We can hear you. No problem.
Okay, thanks. With respect to flooding and sea level rise, I agree with R.K. This is not a new problem. This has been a problem for a very long time. And those of you that have served on city council for twenty years or sixteen years like the mayor, you've had a long time to study this, and you've had a long time to deal with it, and you haven't made much progress. In the meantime, homes are flooding. And so far this fall, we've been lucky. We haven't had a major hurricane come through. But, you know, that's just luck. That's not good planning on the part of the city. We need to deal with the problem, so we need to deal with mitigation now. So first of all, we need, first of all, we need to focus on helping encourage residents and citizens to mitigate and to do what they can. And that may include tax incentives, and it needs a very strong campaign. We do need to look for sources of funding, and I'm convinced that they're there. We need to lobby our federal government. They have a lot at risk. They've got four Navy bases in the area. We need to go up to Washington and meet with our senators and our congresswoman and make arguments on our behalf. And we need to make sure that we do talk to the state and get money from the state. Fortunately, there's some things that have happened that'll help. There's a way to buy open space now. This is going to be, the federal government's going to have a billion dollars in the land conservation fund that we can use for open space. We need to have a plan, and we need to be lobbying for it. We need one person in the city that reports directly to the city manager who can make, who can study and to go after all of the different grants and pursue them. With regard to managed retreat, I'm not sure what that means, but we do need to restrict development in the flood-prone areas until we solve the flooding. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Hutchins.
Yeah, you know, one of the perks of being a new guy is that I get to learn quite a bit during this process. And I don't mean to scare you with this, but the Virginia Institute of Marine Science predicts that the region will see 1.7 feet of sea level rise by 2050. At the same time, we're subsiding roughly 3.5 millimeters per year. Well, thanks to DuBerry's study and the ongoing efforts by the city for the master drainage plan, we have the solutions and the initiatives to lessen effects on our residents. Now, the framework for our state's master coastal plan will be rolling out in a few weeks, and I'll be watching the progress of that closely to see what solutions and policy changes will come from it. We can't stop the flooding sea level rise. We can make changes to adapt to the changing environment and lessen the effects. Thanks to the advocacy of Councilwoman Henley, I know some folks at the regional level have been working to bring some funding to the Hanter Rose area by imposing a state change in the smart scale scoring system, which is designed to incorporate resiliency to allow for more funding from B-Dot and also changing the definition of resiliency to include sea level rise and flooding. With respect to retreat, I think, I think is the golden question, and any answer given doesn't feel right. How do we tell homeowners who own property close to the shoreline that they have to leave? I have no problem telling them what they should do as we backed it by data and science, but it's a tough question. Where should we prioritize funding and protections? Our wildlife areas like Back Bay or our developed areas where homeowners on the shore reside? I don't really have the answer, and it's something, it's something that I'd like to figure out in the very near future. Thanks.
Thank you. Nadine Panish.
Okay, so I go back to the fact that we live in a coastal city. And I believe that if we respect where we live, we can create industry. We can create green, sustainable energy solutions. We can retain our environmental science majors and stop them from running off to Colorado. We could create a fourth leg of our three-legged industry stool. And it can be all about mitigation, infrastructure, green energy solutions. So yes, we do have to advocate for monies from the state and the federal government, but we're not doing enough right here where we are. We can create a new industry. Secondly, you know, we have let the developers have a field day in our city for twenty years, thirty years, forty years. And really, what really shows me that it's still in existence today is the fact that in 2003, we moved the green line, okay? City council people who are still on council were responsible for the decision to move that green line and allowed developers to literally open the floodgates to Back Bay. On top of that, a month ago, we allowed in Back Bay a zone, a spot zoning change that allowed agricultural land to be deemed commercial, okay? One of our industries, we actually put one of our industries in jeopardy with that decision. So my goal, one of the first things we can do is create a city council that is not indebted to special interests. And once we do that, we're going to have an objective vision about the future. It's, to me, I look, I've been watching this for three years as an advocate in Back Bay, and I am mind-boggled at the decisions we make because they're not rational and they're not objective. There's something else going on here. Regarding the managed retreat, you know, in some cases, there is no other option. In some cases, for homeowners, there is no other option than to retreat. But we don't even have programs, really consistent programs in place that address raising homes on a consistent basis. And people make the mistake of believing that, oh, you live on the water, you should expect this. This is happening across our city in neighborhoods like Windsor Woods, in neighborhoods like Red Mill and Chesapeake and Collie that have never flooded before. It's not just Back Bay, and it's not oceanfront. It's across the city. We do not have our toolbox put together.
Thank you. I hate to interrupt, but we've passed the two minutes. Thank you very much.
All right.
And Rosemary Wilson.
Yes, quite a few points here. First of all, it's not just our problem, it's a regional problem. Water doesn't know any boundaries. And we do need to be working with the federal government and the military bases and the military properties that are here for them to be partners with us. But this is a big-money problem. And the DuBerry study really helped us create a roadmap of where we need to go to be able to fix it. Now, people say we need to get started right now. Well, no, you need to do your homework first. You need to develop a plan because you're going to spend a lot of money. And if you do it poorly, you're just going to throw it out the window and then have a lot of disappointed people. So doing this DuBerry study was extraordinarily, a gigantic first step of figuring out how we need to fix these major problems. Now, big money, yes. We talked about doing a bond referendum this spring for this November election, but then COVID hit, and the feeling was it was not enough opportunity to really get out to the public so that the public could really understand what it all meant because not all areas of the city floods. So there might be people who live in an area that's very dry that doesn't want to pay for the flooding issues. But because of COVID, we decided we need to wait on this bond referendum. But the bond referendum issue is still going to be out there for us to be able to pursue. The other thing is, and Bobby mentioned this, is creating more wealth because we have a limited pot of money now. And we've got lots of people pulling up. We've got, we've got salaries, and we need to pay our police more. We need to pay our teachers more. And we've got aging infrastructure, so there's a limited amount. But what a lot of people have not realized is that there's going to be five hundred wind turbines built off of our coast of North Carolina and Virginia. And all of that is coming right through Virginia Beach, and we are location, location, location. And that is going to help create a lot of new jobs and a lot of new money that's going to be able to help our economy right here and through economic development. We are constantly adding in new jobs every month. Even though we've had a COVID crisis, we're doing a lot of great things. Managed retreat and restrict, we have a program that a lot of houses that are getting recurrent flooding, if they, if they, if they meet the criteria, they can be raised. And there are some homes that are being purchased from willing sellers if they're recurrent flooding so that they can go to a drier, safer place. So we are doing some things.
I hate to cut people off, but...
No, no, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we'll move on now to our final question, and Jim will be asking that question.
Our final question concerns diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice. During the past year, across the country and in our own city, we have experienced heightened awareness of our need to address racial and social inequities. The COVID pandemic has exposed some of these equity problems as well. Issues of diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice are being examined in families, communities, organizations, businesses, and government. Environmental justice is just an important part of that dialogue. So there's four parts to this question, and you can see them on your screens. How can Virginia Beach become a more inviting to all people? And what can we do to ensure that all people have access to open space and natural areas? How can we ensure the poorer communities do not suffer the greatest challenges and losses from sea level rise and increased flooding? And finally, what can the city council do to make sure all residents have a voice in important decisions? And our first answer will be from Jody Wagner.
It's a lot to answer in two minutes, but I'll do my best. First of all, you know, equity and diversity in our city are a challenge, and they're a huge problem. It's been evident for many years. It's been highlighted both by the issues that we've seen with COVID, the illnesses that more people, the minority of people are catching COVID and dying from COVID than the major population. We're seeing that there are major challenges. They're probably the people that are the first to be unemployed and the last to be hired back. And we are finding that they're having a hard time having a voice with city council. There used to be a roundtable when Will Sessoms was mayor of African-American leaders. Our current mayor did not continue that roundtable until after the marches, the Black Lives Matter marches, then he brought them back together. But that was a year and a half or almost two years of lost time of working together to solve the problems. We need to be fighting every day to make sure that we create equity, not just equality, but equity, that we provide the things that are needed to help people so they can get up to the same level. We're fortunate. Virginia Beach is a great city. We've got 247 parks. There are great opportunities, but there are also great needs. And we need to make sure that we're addressing those needs for our low-income communities that are suffering from the greatest challenges. We need to make sure that all residents have a voice in the decisions, and they have, and they're heard. And, you know, right now, these social justice issues are very front and center nationwide. We need to be out there addressing it. And we don't need to look at the Black Lives Matter marches as a we-bout. It isn't the police versus the marchers. It is, everybody should be in favor of social justice. Everybody should be in favor of a safe community. But we need to sit down, and we need to have conversations, and we need to have everybody around the table so that we can craft those solutions. Quite honestly, that's why I got into this race. I don't see that happening in our city, and it needs to. We need to make sure that everybody has a voice and is at the table. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody. And next up is R.K. Kowalowicz.
Well, I've said this for a lot of years. There should be a level playing field for all citizens. The city should be colorblind. There should, there's one set of rules for everybody. I mean, this is a serious problem. If people feel like they're not getting treated fairly, they should have representation they can go talk to and have an open discussion and have people that will return their phone calls, not hide from them when things get tough. And I think some of that's been going on. We have a citizens' review board right now that needs to be tweaked. I've been in front of it before. That's one part. If somebody's being felt like they're not being treated fairly, they can have openness to that, and that could be transparency for everybody to see what's going on. So all citizens can actually hear and see how other people are being treated if they're not being treated fairly. Look, I've always been an advocate of the district system where you actually have a natural form of representative form of government. It's actually in the courts right now. Right now, we have a system, our voting system, to me, is unconstitutional. There's only three ways to have a voting system in this, in our country. Either you have a district award system, either you have an at-large system, or you have a hybrid district or at-large system. We have one of the only systems like it in the country where you have a hybrid system. It's not constitutional. And to give you an example, Louis Jones got elected in Bayside, did not get elected from his Bayside district. He got elected from the outside. So his area didn't want him, but the rest of the city did. That is not a pure form of representative form of government. If we want that level playing field, that's for everybody, we need to be fully transparent, open-minded. There should be no closed-door deals. And I'll be honest with you, this old good-old-boy system that's alive and well in the city of Virginia Beach needs to end. We have five council members that have 120 years on council. You'll never get diversity like that because people become complacent. They're human beings. That's why I'm running. I've talked about these things, and I've done some things about it through the years, but I can do a lot more from the inside. It is time it ends. It's time it ends for the betterment of the city of Virginia Beach, for all citizens, all colors, all neighborhoods.
Thank you, R.K. I hate to cut you off, but our next is Bobby Dyer.
Thank you very much. And this is a most timely question without doubt question or reservation. I'm proud to say in my two State of the Cities speeches that I emphasized from the beginning, there need to be that city of yes, of inclusion, diversity with that level playing field. And we've been having great strides in this direction. Our economic development is now approaching, and people are starting to realize that, yes, Virginia Beach is open to business at all. And that is going to become very, very evident, you know, near future. And to make sure that all people feel welcome. And I'm proud to say, and I've been criticized for, you know, maybe hiding, but guess what? I have documented proof that I have done over 1,000 people contacts since I got sworn in. And that's meeting with people all over the city. So everybody in the city knows that they have a mayor. And as a physical therapist, working in people's homes all throughout the city, every race, every neighborhood I have been in and got to know people's concerns and problems, they know with Bobby Dyer that they have a voice that is with them and that understands their situations. And let's just say, I got asked in an interview recently, what do I want my legacy to be after my next four years? And that has really become simple. I want the city of Virginia Beach to be the template for the rest of this nation on how we come together as a community. we come together as a community. We have a great police department, and it's public safety and schools. We have a community that is bonded by faith, the faith-based diversity of many faiths that are the glue that holds this city together. We can show how great a city we are as a collective, and that we are united arm-in-arm moving forward in unity. And once again, our motto, community, unity, and prosperity for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. And next is Rosemary Wilson.
Well, how do we make it more inviting to all people and sure all residents have a voice? This year, we hired a very progressive and actually very bright superstar of a city manager that we went without a city manager for almost a year. So that was a really great thing. And I personally have tried to make sure that I have appointed people, minorities, to our boards and commissions to make sure that they have a voice on our volunteer boards and commissions. And today, I had a job fair in Sea-Tac. The Hotel Association, the Restaurant Association, Atlantic Avenue Association, we all came together and with representative from Tybworth Community College to offer free educational grants in the Sea-Tac community. So we met this afternoon from four to six, and it was really wonderful. And it was advertised on television, and we had people coming out and signing up and getting jobs and getting their applications filled in right there. And it created a nice, nice thing for the companies that needed workers and the people that needed to work. I'm working on open space and natural area. Well, I think that Rudy Loop should be a park for the people. I think that that should be open and available for all of our people. I've been also working on some pocket parks in a very low-income, dense neighborhood where those children need a place to play. We need to attack the most dire sea-level flooding areas in our city, which is the Windsor Woods area, and that's what we're doing first. And that is close to a $400 million project that we're going to be getting off the ground very, very soon. We're identifying the properties that need to be purchased. We've been doing maintenance and digging out the canals and making it much, much better. So we're doing a lot of different things, and we have a very diverse city, and we need to be open, and we need to be accepting, and we need to be able to work together because together we're better.
Thank you, Rosemary. I appreciate it. I have to cut you off. Next is Nadine Canisha.
Thank you. The first thing that comes to mind about making Virginia Beach more inviting to all people would be the implementation of the diversity study that we did. I think we did a diversity study, but I'm not sure we ever actually implemented it, if I'm not mistaken. So I think that would be a great start since we paid for that. That would be number one. And then what can we do to encourage it more is I really think that there's a challenge with our appointment process. I think that when you have city council appointing people and you have city council folks who have no term limits, they're there for 20, 30, 40 years, they're appointing their like-minded people. And so you're never going to get diversity when you have that system in place, and I've spoken about that before. How can we lower the income communities, the lower-income communities? The reality is that 70% of the country's contaminated waste sites, this is in the country, are located near low-income housing, and I'm sure that Virginia Beach has a microcosm of that. And, you know, so this environmental justice umbrella really is the umbrella to the social injustices that exist right now. If you don't live in a space that is open and green and quiet and safe, you are at a disadvantage right out of the gate. So what I would do is work more closely with the developers in a more meaningful way to get them to create sustainable developments that include parks, that include affordable housing, that include all of the things that we need to create a sustainable future from this point moving forward. It's a paradigm shift. It's changing the way we negotiate in the city. And we have to call the shots. They can't call the shots. So we set the expectation and work with them to get the result that we need. And how, like I said, the voice part, that's, you know, that's that appointment process. Those are the councils that are created, the flooding council that Jody created. I mean, those are voices from the community that have not been able to be heard because we didn't have access.
Thank you, Nadine. I'm going to have to have.
That's fine.
And let's, our final contributor will be Brandon Hutchins.
Yes, thank you. You know, I wanted to be able to give you some sort of cool political-type answer, but unfortunately, my conscience isn't going to allow me to do that this evening. While I can appreciate the Councilwoman and Wilson's job applications, and that's fantastic, there's more that we can do to include bringing more people to the table. The disparity study was just a step. There are 12 of those steps, actually. All of them need to be implemented, which they have not been. You know, a lot of times, we'll see our elected leaders and those running for office talk about how diverse, inclusive, and open for business the city of Virginia Beach is, but that's just not the case. And we all know that. Because when we speak to those that are on the various boards and commissions, and they're presented with opportunities to be inclusive, diverse, and open for business, they fail. But more often than not, they fail behind closed doors and not with the public eye. So we are, in fact, diverse, inclusive, and open for business. The same conversation that you're having behind closed doors needs to take place out in front of the community. Be what you say you are, do what you say you're going to do. Oftentimes, I talk about politics as it relates to my son when I ask him to sweep, or if I see a mess on the kitchen floor, and I say, Chris, I need you to sweep the kitchen floor. And so I look back through the kitchen, we're opening a kitchen, and he appears to be sweeping, right? I go back in a couple minutes later, and there's still stuff on the floor. And I say, Chris, did you sweep? Yes, Dad, I swept. And I say, well, Chris, why is there stuff still on the floor? Don't sweep to tell me that you swept. Sweep to clean up. Let's stop putting Band-Aids on serious issues. Let's stop the bleeding, and let's heal. To do that, we need to truly be inclusive and stop putting up the smoke screen that now everybody can see through. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all for tackling these five really complex questions. We could easily have spent 90 minutes on any one of them. And we appreciate your efforts to, you know, to fit it into the two-minute timeframe. We're going to move now to closing statements, and each candidate has two minutes again to make a closing statement. And we'll start with R.K. Kowalowicz.
Thank you for having me, first of all. Got a question for you guys. Are you tired of lip service instead of actions? How about the debt in the last 16 years that my opponent's been there has went from nothing or positive to $2.4 billion in debt? To put it in perspective, we have $177 millions of dollars a year that we use just to service our debt. And thinking what tourism generates here, somewhere around $80 million, and most of that debt's at the oceanfront. Think, do the math, it's pretty simple. Talk about stormwater. Stormwater, we've been talking, I've been talking about this for 15 years, and what's been done? Nothing. If it wasn't for me screaming for the last six election cycles about it, I wonder how much little less would have been done. So let's put some actions out there. How about something more important in all of this, public safety? Since the year 2002, we were 50 police officers short. Today, we're about 120 short from budget amount that's in the budget and the money's there for it. For a city of our size, we're more like 200 to 300 police officers short. These are things that have to change. How about open space? If it wasn't for me talking about Rudy Loop saving it for the last 15 years and working with a friend of mine, opened a Facebook page that has 5,700 people on it to save Rudy Loop, the last undeveloped space at the oceanfront, what would be happening? Would we be having that conversation? No. Those are actions that have been taken. Let me just say this in closing, there's so many issues here. And two minutes is not enough time to talk about what really needs to get done. I can tell you this much, though, I'll make a promise to everybody. I will not work for special interest. I will work for you. I will not lead from the rear, I will lead from the front. You won't have to look for me, you will hear me and see me. It is time for a change to get this city back on course. We have a wonderful city, a great place to live. What we have is lack of leadership, and it's time to changes. 120 years of five people servicing, and look what's happening to our city, our debt. People are leaving our city every year for the last four years. We're the number-one underwater mortgage city, according to Zillow in the country, at 16.9%. That is not a success story, that is failure. I'm asking people to vote for R.K. for the change that every citizen, every color, every neighborhood deserves. Thank you. Vote R.K.
Thank you. Jody Wagner.
Karen, first, I want to thank you and the members of Lynn Haven River Now for putting on this forum and giving us an opportunity to get our ideas out. In some respects, I agree a lot with R.K. There are a lot of things we don't agree on, but what we do agree on is that the city does need a change in leadership. We really have so many great opportunities that we need to seize on. Let me give you just a few. We should be the leaders in mitigation. We should be the East Coast leader in the knowledge and in producing the two pieces of equipment that are needed to mitigate. We have an opportunity to really do that because we're an area that has one of the greatest needs for mitigation. And we have great assets. We have Lynn Haven River Now, we have the Chesapeake Bay Authority. So we have a lot that we can build on and we can use. We need to be focusing on doing that, and we need to be focusing on incentivizing residents and businesses to do their own mitigation. That means tax incentives, and that means a very hefty campaign. Second, we have great opportunities to build other businesses. The subsea cables that are coming in, combined with what we've learned in COVID. In COVID, we learned that you can live here and work there. So we need to focus on that and bring businesses, knowledge-based businesses to Virginia Beach that will put their headquarters here and will service customers in San Francisco or New York. That'll help us stop the brain drain of our children going to other cities and give us an opportunity to grow our economy and grow our jobs. And finally, offshore wind is a great opportunity. It gives us, it's projected to bring 16,000 jobs to Hampton Roads. We need to capture the knowledge-based jobs from Virginia Beach, and we need to go after that in a strong way. I look forward to working with you and for you over the next four years. We can really take advantage of these opportunities. So thank you very much, and please vote for me on or before November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Bobby Dyer.
First of all, let me thank you all for this wonderful forum, and I compliment my opponents. You know, civility goes a long way, and I really appreciate it. Let me just say this, I am proud to have been your mayor, but I have also been proud of being on city council and a 14-year liaison to the Minority Business Council and the Human Rights Commission, and got a lot of things accomplished in the city prior to being mayor. But I've never been more proud of our city than as mayor. The strength of Virginia Beach are, in fact, the people of Virginia Beach, the people that work here and live here. And let me just say this, you know, our greatest days are going to be ahead of us because we are a unified, resilient city. And, you know, we are, in spite of everything, still of the safest city of our city our size. I am proud to be endorsed by the police, the FOP, the FIRE, the Virginia Beach Hospitality, and the Chamber of Commerce, because I think they have confidence that my vision going forward is to be the city that we are and the city that we could be, a great city taking it to its next level of community, of unity, and prosperity for all. But I just want to thank everybody and say God bless you for what you all do. And, you know, I look forward to working with you over the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll move to our at-large candidates, and we'll start with Rosemary Wilson.
Thank you, Karen. I just wanted to say how much I have supported environmental issues since I've been on council. One of the first things I did when I got on council was I created a program called Two Cents for the Oysters. That program became the Oyster Heritage Fund. And look how many wonderful things that we've done with that. I have, I've been against offshore drilling. I represented the state for the Local Government Advisory Commission for the Chesapeake Bay. And you read about that in the paper today about how Virginia is doing a really great job, and Maryland is doing a great job, but some of the other states are not. I was a strong, strong advocate against uranium mine. I went to, I was the past president of the Virginia Municipal League, and I went to them, and I got them to put in their legislative package that they would fight uranium mining, just like we were here in Virginia Beach. That was really, really important because you imagine if that had gone through, we wouldn't probably, we couldn't live here because if our water got tainted, there would be no place to live with our water. I'm proud to say that we have a public-private partnership with Lynn Haven River Now. When Lynn Haven River Now was formed, the city stepped up to be part of your partners, and that was really a great thing. I love our city. I think we have a great city, and I think sometimes we forget how wonderful a city it is. And it's not perfect, and there's always going to be room for improvement. But fortunately, there's a lot of groups that have looked at me very strongly and felt that I was the best person to continue leading our city. And that included the Chamber of Commerce that endorsed me, the VBEA, the Teachers' Organization, the Fraternal Order of Police, the Police Penevillate Association, the firefighters, and the hospitality industry. I've all been, they've all endorsed me because they ask the hard questions and they know that I'm the person who they need to have in a leadership role. In this time of crisis, it's really important to have people who've been there to get you through it, and I really believe I'm that person. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. Brandon Hutchins.
Yes, first, thank you, Lynn Haven River Now for hosting this forum. I've always appreciated the work and support our communities here. You guys are the experts that we needed to table on the issues that we spoke about tonight. I'd also like to thank each and every candidate here running. This is definitely not for the faint of heart, and it takes a lot to step up. So thank you, guys, for doing that. I respect each and every one of you. What you've heard tonight is a bunch of differing and sometimes similar responses to the biggest issues facing our city. And I'm confident that each and every person up here has the ability to find the answer and find the solution. What differentiates myself from others is who will fight for those solutions, who's going to advocate for those solutions, and who's actually going to work effectively with our other council members, stakeholders, our region, state, and federal partners for those solutions. So I'm running for one reason, to be a voice for the voiceless and to return this seat back to the citizens of Virginia Beach. If you know me at all, you know that I do not make empty promises, and I always vow to welcome and actively encourage input and involvement from our community. I can't do this alone, and I never intended or want to. And I definitely don't have all the answers, and I personally will be wary of someone who claims to. A lot of these issues aren't new. The members that have been on city council have had years to bring effective change. And I think it's time that we give new voices and new perspectives a chance. It really is. And you guys know I'm a U.S. Navy veteran, I currently work in healthcare, and my wife and I own a small business, a hair salon. We just relocated back behind City Hall, actually. I've been a community advocate, and ultimately, I'm literally just like you, no more, no less. So again, thank you all. My name is Brandon Hutchins, and I'm running for the at-large seat. Please vote for me, at least by November 3rd. Thank you.
I would like to thank Lynn Haven River Now. You guys are an aspiration I work for, not work for, but I'm on the board of the Back Bay Restoration Foundation, and our paths cross a lot, but I've learned a great deal from the way you guys run your organization, and I'm grateful for the liaisons that we have. But what I do want to say in closing is that I am an advocate and have been for sustainability, for flooding, and for the desire to bring a fourth industry to this coastal city that I believe we've just tipped on with the offshore wind. It can be so much bigger than that. We might not need to look for funding for flooding if we grow this, you know? And I feel like we can do it if we all have the same vision. What I want to say is that I think it's really great that we've worried about oysters, and we've done all these little things along the way that are really warm and fuzzy and do have a purpose. But what we're failing to do on a daily basis is have a vision for development and planning in the city. And until we get our arms around that, okay, all this other stuff that we're doing with flood mitigation, it doesn't matter. Because if we're not more careful with our development and we're not more demanding of- and we're not more demanding of our developers to build green spaces into their developments, to include affordable housing into those developments, we are never going to catch up. So I just want everyone to know that I'm running as an independent candidate. I'm a very independent person, but I do work with people well, and that I don't have any fancy special interest backing for a reason, and that I'm not paid for or supported by a political party. So this journey has been one of love, exactly like the Back Bay Restoration Foundation. It is a journey of love, and it's a journey of caring about this coastal city and creating something amazing for every single human that lives here and every creature that lives here that carries us into the future for 50 to 100 years. I'm hoping that I can earn your vote now or through November 3rd, and I will work hard for the city and for the residents who live here. I appreciate the time today. Thank you, Lynn Haven River Now, and thanks, everyone else on this panel.
Thank you, Nadine, and again, I apologize. Embarrassed.
No.
Really sorry.
Can I get my extra minute now?
All right. So a reminder that we are recording it, so I can get embarrassed all over again every time someone watches. And it will be on our YouTube channel tomorrow morning. Next Wednesday, the 14th, we'll be hosting the seven candidates for the three district seats, the Rose Hall, Kimstown, and Centerville district seats. And a reminder to everyone that everyone in Virginia Beach votes for every council seat. So even if you don't live in those districts, please tune in for our forum next week. And I want to give a big thank you to all of the candidates for joining us tonight and for your willingness to serve. It is a big deal, and I know it's a sacrifice on everyone's part. So thank you all for your willingness to run and for your willingness to serve our wonderful city. And everyone, please vote on or before November 3rd. Thank you.
God bless everybody.
Bye.
Thank you all. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.